Okay. We are calling the meeting to order at 4:01. Roll call?
Trustee Anderson?
Here.
Trustee Crane?
Here.
Trustee Wagen?
Here.
Trustee Pearson?
Here.
Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Orsoilu? Trustee Barto?
Here.
Dr. Smith?
Here.
Okay. Adoption of the minutes, or adoption of the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Barto. Roll call up.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Here, yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Okay.
There are no community input for closed session items.
Okay.
All right, we will now move to a closed session. The items are 5A, conference with labor negotiator; 5B, public employee discipline dismissal release employment; 5C, student discipline one case; and 5D, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation one potential case. We will return to open session at 6:00 PM. Going to closed session now at 4:02. Okay, we will call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock.
Oh, we will begin with the opening ceremonies with the moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance led by TJ Rokas, our student board member.
Please rise. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, adoption of the minutes from December 13th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by trustee Wagen, seconded by trustee Crane. Roll call up.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
And we will go into our student board member reports. The question? The question that was asked was, given the board is hearing about the district-wide facilities master plan timeline, what are two top improvements that you would like to see on your individual campuses? Please also share two campus highlights from the school year so far. And we'll start with TJ.
All righty, thank you Superintendent Smith and members of the board. I hope everyone had a terrific holiday break. Before I begin on the topic, I wanted to use this platform to thank someone that has had a huge impact on my life and the lives of so many seekers before me. Dan O'Shea stepped down as our head football coach right before the break, and I just wanted to say that these past four years have been the best time of my life, and he has been a big part of that. He will be deeply missed by all at CDM, but I know that Coach Hedig will be a tremendous replacement. What I will miss most is watching O'Shea run from his car to his classroom right as, or even a few minutes after, the first career bell rang. He really was just like all of us. Coach, I expect you to be watching film right now and not this board meeting, but if you are watching, I wish you the best of luck, and I hope you enjoy the extra time you will be able to spend with your family. Now, we were instructed by Mrs. Crane to name two specific facility improvements that each of our schools needed. At CDM, after talking with Principal Haley, the both of us want to make it clear that we appreciate the board's effort in this department and the fact that we have really made this priority. We understand the difficulty that many of these tasks come with. My first answer, which is short and sweet, are the roofs in the certain areas of the 200 and 300 buildings. They leak and they are discolored. It may be wise to invest in new roofing, but considering that these buildings were built when Kennedy was in office, I think they're holding up pretty well. The more common, yet complicated complaint that I receive are the bathrooms. Yes, it's true that the bathrooms at CDM don't live up to the standards of our school, nor our district. And I wouldn't be surprised if Fernando and Marcelina mentioned them in their reports as well. So my concern with investing money in them, though, is that they're always going to be those group of kids that vandalize them intentionally. I don't know why they do it, but it's just what happens. This is best evidenced in the enclave bathroom, which is less than a decade old, but has already had several problems as a result of abuse and misuse. There is one exception to this, though. I would like to see our facilities department specifically focus on the basketball or on the bathroom in the basketball gym. The bathroom is in poor condition, not because of student behavior, but because of old age. There are usually trash bags around men's urinals, and I'm concerned that the one stall in there is inaccessible for someone in a wheelchair or any other kind of disability. My activities director did confirm that he believes it does violate some ADA regulations. All people are entitled equal access to our facilities. Also, this bathroom is commonly used by fans and adults, not students, so the odds of it being wrecked are smaller. I personally think it would be wise to invest in a nicer facility for the parents to use. I would be happy to provide further insight to any district official or board member that would like to take up this initiative. I extend gratitude to our facilities team that works tirelessly to improve our education. Next, we were also asked to mention two things that have been highlights on our campus. This week, I'm reporting first that we have our winter formal at the Yost Theater on Saturday, January 28th. I got to tour the facility, and I learned a very interesting ghost story. The venue is actually haunted, and it has very strong roots in Orange County's history. All in all, it will be a great dance. If you are a parent watching, please encourage your son or daughter to attend. Not only will it be fun, but the profit ASB makes off ticket sales helps pay for many things around school. Secondly, I'm choosing to highlight a special school new show that myself and the senior class president have started this year, Maxshim. We host it biweekly. If you haven't seen it, it's called Hot Seat. We post episodes on Instagram and TryinTV. Our guests have included various students, community members, and teachers. We ask some questions about their roles in personal lives while we eat wings with sauce on them, and this sauce is so hot that most guests can't make it through the show without crying or leaving the set. So I'm using this space to officially invite Superintendent Dr. Smith on the show to be our season two opener. We'll see if he can handle the heat. He's probably the closest thing to a celebrity that we can get to come on. Finally, thank you to the community that I was born and raised in for the opportunity to serve in this role on the student board. It has been a very high honor thus far. To my fellow students, I promise to deliver the same amount of effort and intention to detail this semester as last in my role as your student body president. You elected me to a full-year term, and I intend on working for you until the good day that I graduate. So while those spring break and Cabo and Stagecoach will be a blast for us, my promise is to you is that I will not check out this school in this semester, and I encourage every other senior to do the same. With only a few short months left, don't let your opportunity to make an impact on the school that has given you so much fall through the cracks. God bless you all.
Fernando Bernal?
Hello, Board President Anderson, Superintendent Smith, and fellow Board of Trustees. At Estancia, there have been groundbreaking activities as the new theater is scheduled to begin this spring. Our school would benefit from a complete master plan that shows a specific location and timeline for construction of other facility improvement projects that have been discussed but not fully articulated. Specifically, Estancia remains uncertain of when the new lunch court that was proposed to be built on top of the old pool four years ago will begin. In addition, identifying the locations and timeline for the new sand volleyball courts and football compound would be appreciated by the students and staff at Estancia. It would be great if Estancia received the same football facility that is equitable to the ones enjoyed by student athletes at Newport Harbor and CDM. A highlight in this school year was the opportunity of having a doc therapy day at Estancia before finals week. It was much needed, given that finals week is always stressful to students, and it was a great way for students, staff, and faculty members to connect towards their love of animals, and we hope to continue to have similar events throughout the remaining school year. Another highlight that I would like to mention is that the nonprofit organization started by Rebecca Robic and her mother called Let's Be Kind decided to start a Let's Be Kind Day on our campus. Estancia celebrated Let's Be Kind Day on October 21st, and the event went well as the whole student body enjoyed the activities, raffle opportunities, and food that Let's Be Kind provided in order to spread more kindness. I also wanted to point out that the senior lawn continues to be a place where students go to connect and interact with one another, and this space was very crucial in providing a positive environment for our Let's Be Kind Day. Thank you for listening to my report.
Thank you. Marcelina Sanchez?
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, President Anderson, and members of the board. I would, the first improvement I would like to see on the early college-high school campus would be a student learning center. As you are aware, we don't have a library or any space for students to be in. Having a classroom used as the center can allow for students to find a quiet space to do homework, read, print, or check out books. On rainy days, students huddle in the multipurpose room, which isn't always the best. Having a separate space for students to feel comfortable to get work done is important. Another improvement I would like to see is, last year, someone went onto the campus and stole items from staff members, but they also broke the bathroom door. And to this day, that bathroom door in the women's restroom has not been fixed. Another improvement I would also like to see that isn't a facility improvement, but is having motivational speakers come speak to the avid classes. As a school that strives for academic excellence, having motivational speakers will give students insight on potential careers they can pursue. I am happy to say that I have spoken to Executive Superintendent Ms. Carrie Torres to see what measures can be taken to make these improvements become a reality. A campus highlight ECHS had was the Holiday Spirit Week, where students got the opportunity to dress like Santa, wear PJs, and prepare for winter break. The ASB team also passed out hot chocolate in the morning as the weather is getting chillier. In addition, we are preparing to have the Winter Formal at Marina Park on February 11th. The ASB team is working really hard to make sure this year's theme, Masquerade Ball, is a memorable one. We are happy to say that we will be having Back Bay joining us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will have no board report for Harbor Council PT, so we will move on to NMFT President Rhonda Reed. Oh, actually, no, we will have Tamara Fairbanks.
Good evening, President Anderson, Dr. Smith, honored board, and guests. Unfortunately, Rhonda Reed is under the weather, so you have to listen to me. But I do want to thank you for your support of the arts. I saw many of you at the holiday concerts this past December, and I'm, and we're really excited about the approval of funds from Supervisor Foley's office so every, so our kids can actually experience instruments in the classroom. And we're really excited about that, just to have student instruments in students' hands and creating a climate for creativity. I would like to celebrate our certificated staff for a successful fall semester, and I'm looking forward to a wonderful spring. I hope the holidays were that time for respite and a means of refueling. Sometimes our days may be challenging, but we know that we're in this as a collective to make a difference in children's lives. And we just thank you for just what is to come in our facilities and everything in all of our programs. Thank you.
Thank you. For CSCA, will you be speaking, Stuart, or is someone else?
I'm going to speak, and then I'm going to do a little introduction.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, President Anderson, Superintendent, trustees, cabinet, and esteemed guests. It's my privilege and honor to introduce the first half of what I, we are referring to as our A Team on our executive board. Somehow, we ended up with four A ladies in very key positions, and I'm going to tell you that every single one of them is a very high performer in that they put the kids first, they put the classroom first, and when we're all said and done, that's really why we're here. So I'd like to call them up. On my right is Amy Ching. She's my first vice president. She works in?
Budgets.
Budgets with Jeff.
Yes.
And this is Amber Schumacher, my second vice president, and she is an office assistant.
Administrative assistant at Woodland Elementary.
At Woodland Elementary. They're both highly qualified, but even more than that, they're both very motivated and central, and they're thinking that the classroom is first. And we take care of our members. Everybody on the board can agree that I put my members pretty much towards the top, but we do know that we're here for the kids. And when we do that, everything that comes to us has a natural feel to it. It's a good thing for us, and it reaps benefits for everybody. So we want to maintain that positive attitude going forward into the new school year. I'm really happy for the new leadership we have on the board. You guys are going to kill it, because I'm going to be right there behind you, helping you every step of the way. So if you need anything from us, you know how to get ahold of me. What am I, number six on your speed dial? So I just want to say thank you for letting me speak tonight. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move to community input on non-agendized items.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on non-agenda topics are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. By Order of Brown Act, section 54954 dot 2, the board will take no action nor have any discussion on non-agendized items. The superintendent may provide clarification during superintendent's comments.
Thank you. First up, Kristin Carlin.
Hi, good evening to the board. I'm Dr. Smith, and welcome to some new faces on the board. My name's Kristin Carlin, and my history here with Newport Mesa started randomly in 2004 when I was placed at a, as a student teacher, and I quickly jotted down all the roles and hats that I've had in this district, and it's surpassed 15 roles, so as a admin, what's it called? The administrative designee when the principal's gone, everything from a substitute teacher more recently, and now as a parent. And so I just want to share a few words, and I want to encourage you as we start this new year. I've noticed in my time that we plan so far ahead. We have to, as a district with as many students and teachers that you serve, in terms of looking ahead and really analyzing what's working and what's not working. What are some systems in place that aren't working? And as the current, as a current PTA president in our school district, there are some systems in place that I'd really like to bring attention to that have to do with equity and also opportunities, and it kind of relies on an outdated system. So most of the parents at a lot of the schools in our district, they're working parents. We don't have, we're not swimming in extra time with volunteers. And so two very well-worded emails were sent out this, this past month in December from the district highlighting the importance of the arts, highlighting the importance of field trips. And it made me realize how those programs fall on the shoulders of our PTAs. And I would really love to encourage you all to consider the importance of having those programs be guaranteed to all of our students regardless of the involvement of the parents, because those are things all of our kiddos need. So things like lunch art, meet the masters, trips to the California missions. When I looked at how much our school receives for those programs directly from the district, I, it's not, I don't think it's anything. And I want to bring attention to that because it is this huge burden as I juggle three kids, a job, all the things, that it's, it's too much. So trying to figure out a system that guarantees that for all the kiddos. Looking at the board's priorities, we have received tremendous love from you guys. Our school's looking better than ever. I really appreciate that. And just all sorts of positives. And just encouraging you, I know one of the goals is to improve our academic achievement, to exceed pre-2019 scores. To me, as an educator and a passionate parent, I don't find that a top priority because that's, seems like the impossible after we've had two of the most troubling years as we've ever had in education. But instead, let's look at how we can come back stronger than ever and have it where we're supporting and providing the nurturing required of our students. We currently have librarians who are functioning as inventory keepers for our Chromebooks, for our Chromebook chargers, for our textbooks, for our workbooks, on top of managing a library, checking books in and out, and hopefully inspiring a few of our kiddos to love reading and learning. Schools that are super needy that would really benefit from having assistant principals and people who can take some of that load off of our principals and provide more capacity, therefore, to our teachers. So, super nervous, and thank you.
Thank you. And next up is Amy Nelferley.
Hi. Good afternoon. Superintendent Wesley Smith and team. My name is Amy Nelferley. I'm a mom of two boys in this school system, and I am curious and have been curious about the ESAR funds and how that works, how this school district has received the monies. I understand that the total dollar value is 42 million as of now, and I want to understand what the stipulations were to receive that money, and then also how they were disseminated to each school and what that decision was based upon. Yeah, that was my, that's my question.
Okay. The process is, we have public comment, and then our superintendent will respond.
Okay.
At the end. After public comment?
Yes.
After public comment? That was my comment, my question.
Yes, when we're done with community input on non-agendized items, then we go into superintendent comments, and then they make the comment on that.
There may be other speakers.
So there may be other speakers, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I really wanted to know. I think it's important for everybody, for the parents, to know where the money's going. So, we're the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to number 14, superintendent's comments.
As always, I'd like to thank the parents for their courage coming out. It's, it's, it takes that to come and speak at a podium in front of people and the bright lights and, and everything. So thank you, and the process can, can be unfamiliar to them, and that's why the board reads that at the beginning, that they can entertain a dialogue with the, the community. It's their job to receive the input from the community. And where I can, I can clarify some things. I, I would like to say that I think Kristin brought up a lot of, of great points, and there are many, many more that she could have referenced. There are so many great things we can do with the resources we have for our students. And the good news is, and I was able to share this with the Harbor Council this week, in the next month or so, we're going to have our first budget study session where this body will meet in a study session here. Of course, the community can come and, and share their input as well. But for the board to sit down and look at the funds we have and prioritizing where those things should be placed, and certainly things like field trips and science camps and arts and, and supervision on campus and mental health supports are all very, very important. So I'm, I'm excited that this board will be able to do that, to sit down and have these tough conversations. As someone in this district said famously years and years ago, we can do everything, or we can do anything, we can't do everything. So what are the things that, that this board's going to prioritize? So that's exciting. And then as far as the ESAR funds, I have the, the speaker's contact information. I'll have staff reach out. Concludes my remarks.
Next up, we have number 15, community input on agendized items.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. Speaker cards for items on the discussion action calendar may be held until the item is considered by the board, if the speaker prefers.
No comments? All right. Next up, we'll do achievement, our new item that we have added to our agenda going forward as a standing item. The board is very supportive of a focus on student achievement, so we're very excited to add this to our agenda.
Good evening, everyone. Superintendent Smith, President Anderson, board members, community, staff, colleagues, everyone watching this presentation. We are happy to bring to you information about the California Dashboard and how the district has done with this. In December, basically before we went on break, this was, became public by the state, and so this is our first opportunity to really go into that information and what it means for me and how to kind of understand the context and how that drives our work moving forward. So in a nutshell, the California Dashboard is a tool of the state to recognize how schools and districts across the state are doing compared to one another and compare to the State Board of Education's priorities that they've outlined. Some of it is through data that they collect, and some of it is through data we give to them from local measures. It really is in an effort to make visual systemic improvement and make visual the progress that the state is making in terms of public education for all of our students' families. Again, this reflects state-level priorities, and on the left, you will see the areas of focus. It's academic performance, engagement, they call engagement, that's chronic absenteeism and graduation rates. Performance, the indicators, many of which we talked about in December. English, language arts, math, S-BAC scores, English learner progress, how students are doing over time, implementation of academic standards. And then the final kind of big bucket is conditions and climate, which includes suspension rates and other locally reported data. I included the URL, is that a URL? The little internet information, God, I sound so old not knowing what to call that. But anyway, I included that information because this is one of the areas where CD does a great job in presenting information on what the dashboard is. So if members of the public, parents, students, teachers were interested, like, what does this dashboard mean? They actually have a wide number of resources that are pretty easy to understand, very clear. So I wanted to include that. It is a simple Google search as well to put the California Dashboard, and this information from the Department of Education will come up. Part of what the dashboard does, in addition to creating visuals, is they report out disaggregated data. Again, an effort by the state, their priority, and the types of disaggregated data. This is specific to Newport Mesa, but I wanted us to see the types of student groups that are pulled out from the data, one, it's numerically appropriate. If the number's too small, they're not reported on to protect student privacy. But for us, foster youth, English learner homeless, students with disabilities, and socio-economically disadvantaged. And then also, they do call out race and ethnicity, and for Newport Mesa, these are the ones that are reported. So this is last year's data, our SEABED data. This is what we report. So this is not this year's numbers, but again, last year's data, last year's test scores. This is how they populate the dashboard. But according to that point in time, our enrollment, our numbers, percent of students who are socially, economically disadvantaged, our number, our percentage of English learners and foster youths. And again, it's important to remember, we are a large district with many micro-communities, and so this isn't every school, but it is who we are in some. And, and the demographics of who we are by school can also, as we all know, be quite different. Again, just an idea that, that there is both aggregated and disaggregated data on the dashboard, and you'll see why that's important as we go through some of the results. The Equity Report is a tool created by the state, and for us, populations that we really know we need to look at and pay attention to, all student populations, of course, subgroups and larger groups. But over time, we have seen that foster youth, students with disabilities, and English learners are farther from success than we would like them to be. And what are our strategies to correct those and move everyone forward where they have opportunities and success? So we're also very fortunate that it's been very clear from the board what our priorities are. You heard from some of them today, the mention of the 2019 levels. People are listening, yay, board priorities. We know that that's not the only one. It is an important one. We are an academic institution. Learning is important, and we know so much goes into making that possible. So the whole child, there was mention of nurturing students and kind of making them feel safe and comfortable in the classroom as well as the adults in the classroom. That is all part of how the board has tasked us moving forward. Engagement and communication, and as we heard, actually, also the facilities master plans, like that our environments, our physical environments, our built environments reflect the quality of learning opportunities we want students to have. You've also heard us talk on different occasions about MTSS. And to the public and to many of our employees, sometimes we don't always take the easiest route to talking about the things we do in schools, and this is multi-tiered system of support. And what it basically says is that we meet students where they are and move them forward, and we understand that the more help that they need, the more support we need to provide. And we do that intentionally and purposefully and have plans in place for each of those kind of areas and thresholds. kind of areas and thresholds. This also reflects system-level improvements, and we've talked a lot up here about continuous improvement. And we want you to know, as we receive this information, we both want to applaud the efforts of staff because this, these are quality professionals doing hard work every day, and we recognize that and understand that people aren't leaving anything at home, they're putting it all on the table when they come to the classroom, and we know we can get better as a system. There are things we can do and change and refine that make adult experiences better, child experiences better, and as a whole, we can get better as a system. And so this allows us yet another point of data to look across zones, across schools, and really across regions, because it's not just us. It's us relative to other schools in the county, relative to other schools in the state, to get a sense of how things are going. So we'll dive into what the results are, and when you go to the website, when you Google this and find this, this is the type of visual that appears, and this is how you know. And this one, actually, chronic absenteeism, remember it's under engagement, this is one of the visuals that's actually a little confusing because it is one of the areas where it says very high, but then it's got just a little, you know, tick mark where, so it looks like, of course, chronic absenteeism is not simply not being in school, it's the percent of school being missed. Chronic meaning that by our state definition, ten percent of existing school days. So it's a target that's always moving because it's ten percent of whatever today is, right? Where we are in the school calendar. But it's not simply like just someone missed a day for this or that. It really gets to the imperative need of students to be in class, to be learning, that that is a philosophical standing we have, that time matters, instructional time matters. And so when you see this, you see how we did twenty-five percent chronically absent, again, kind of thinking about statistics, that's one in four students in our district is missing over a tenth of the school year. And where we are right now, about, that's about two weeks, ten days, give or take, kind of really penciling out every day on the calendar. And so you'll also see from the CD website, the Equity Report, and so, again, recalling that they tell us here the number of groups that we're looking at, how many subgroups of students are in each of these categories. And again, where if this was achievement, we'd want people to be very high, we'd want students to be very high, because it's chronic absenteeism, we actually want it to be low. Lower is better in chronic, I mean, that makes sense. So what does this mean to us now that we know this? And we know that last year was also, this reflects COVID data, this reflects time we have to spend at home because of everything that we went through. Again, it is relative, so we also know that other districts in our state had the same criteria for excluding students when they had tested positive, and you know, who wants to rehash all of that? But, but we also know that there's more that we can do to track and manage and help assist families when it's not things like illness, because of course, we want six students to be home getting well. I mean, that is given. But we also want to be able to help families that are encountering barriers that are in the way of getting students to school. And so thinking about how we do that in a very purposeful and intentional way, how we ensure that we're deploying the right staff, and how we're thinking about that, not only as a student at a school, but even a family in our district who might have students across multiple schools experiencing similar issues. So that is our, kind of, again, what we take in from seeing this information at the state level about chronic absenteeism, and this was already something that was on our radar, and it punctuates our need to do more. Graduation rates, again, we're doing well in here. We always want to see this improve. I mean, this is a great rate, and we always see room for improvement in terms of, this matters for every child, we know graduation is such a key milestone for a student's lifetime. Like while we're pleased with where we are, we also know that there's more room to cover and that we want to continue it to improve here. And you've heard prior reports from college and career and other things of all the efforts happening in our secondary schools. Also knowing graduation rate doesn't fall only on secondary. We are a K-12 district that is part of our superpower, so that intentionality with the vertical slice and making sure even that in TK and K, we're setting families and students up for this monumental path. Suspension rates, again, this is under conditions of learning, wanting to make sure, and we've, we've been talking about this as a district, there's the continuum of the preventative, robust thinking about keeping students emotionally sound and safe so that they're in class and learning. There's the issue of discipline and behavior, and then there's also the issue of needing to keep the entirety of the student population safe, right? So it is a whole continuum of how we think about addressing this issue. There are times when exclusion is absolutely necessary for safety, there are other times when we can do preventative measures to prevent these types of egregious behaviors from happening, and we, we need to think about them all. We don't get a choice about putting one or the other, we have to do them all for all students. So you've heard us talk about Ruler, you've heard us talk about PBIS, you've heard us talk about trainings that are happening for teachers, the types of positions that we have been able to add over time, whether that was elementary counselors, whether that's behavioral specialists, like we have done different things, and we will continue to try and do different things to meet this need as we know it's important. English learner progress, I think you've heard a little bit about this, and this is something we intend to bring back to the board in terms of another item, standalone item under achievement. But this is where we talk about the issues of reclassification, how English learners are doing over time, the amount of English they're learning, how that is measured over reports, and then not only the amount of English they're learning, but how they're doing in our system and how they're navigating and moving through to also have graduation and academic success. A lot of this information fuels the conversations we have at ELAC and DLEC meetings, the types of things we're working with families to strengthen their knowledge so that they can be strong advocates for their students in our system. And it also, like everything else, includes teaching tools and curriculum and assessment, so instructionally, we know where students are and what needs to come next.
And then I pass the mic over to Mike Kelly.
Good evening, everyone. Carrie Torres, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, and I'm speaking also tonight on behalf of our team, John Drake, who couldn't be present tonight, who is our Assistant Soup of Elementary, as we collaborated on this presentation tonight. And just continuing on, on dashboard information, so this is a fun slide for me because they didn't report on it last year. And so this is the college and career indicator, and so we do have historical data on the dashboard, but for last year, they did not report that. But to be able to share with you what this is, this really talks about how we are preparing our students for college and career readiness. And so that's exceptionally important because that includes career and technical education, it includes things like dual enrollment, it will include things like work-based learning. So all of these options are opportunities that we can provide to students that will help them either go into the workforce or go into a post-secondary plan in college and/or university. And as you may know or remember, we have quite a robust career and technical education program. Some of you were able to visit our most recent program over at Back Bay in the Spider Lab. And so we continue to make large investments as a priority to be able to provide our students with these opportunities. We have an exceptional college-going rate and college eligibility rate within our district as well at all of our schools, and so we're very proud of that. But this is something that we will continue to focus on, and as we move forward, you're going to see our district look at relationships between more work-based learning and community, and really providing opportunities for internships for our students. We find that that's exceptionally important, and industry has asked us for that. So they are very interested in having our students partner early and learn early what they love to do and what, just as important, what they don't love to do. And then again, developing those soft and hard skills as part of the curriculum, and we have some wonderful student board members who you've heard speak, and some of those skills are so important as we teach our students how to present, how to prepare information, and how to be thoughtful in their communications. And then you may remember that in late fall, we had a presentation regarding our S-BAC data, our Smarter Balanced California Assessment that we have in English, Language, Arts, and Math. And so we have seen a deep dive into that data previously, so I just wanted to highlight here for you that that data does exist on the California State Dashboard. And here we have our English, Language, Arts, and as Socorro mentioned earlier, you'll see the Equity Report on the bottom. Pleased to report, we don't have any that are exceptionally low or very low, but we do have some other student groups that we continue to focus on as we move forward, but we are seventeen percentage points above the average in the state, which is fantastic. And we continue to chase that goal of pre-COVID rates. And then just what we've been doing as a district, when we look at elementary and secondary education, is really focusing and, and locking down on early literacy. There's been many conversations with our principals on how we can achieve early literacy and what work we need to do there. We're taking a look at the different types of literacy assessments that we do and how we can measure student growth in reading, really focusing on the K-three group as well because we know that that is truly where students' early literacy comes into play. Right now, in secondary, we have an ELA adoption that will be coming up, and so we're just looking at different instructional materials to support our English program and working with our teachers to provide a rich opportunity in literature resources. And then there is still a focus on reading in secondary, and so as you may realize, we still have students who, as they age up into our schools, still struggle to read. And so we have reading to learn and then learning to read, learning to read, right? So we flip those backwards and forwards, and so by the time you're in secondary, you know, there are some challenges that some of our students face. And so we still continue to have that as a discussion, and we do have courses to support students' acquisition of reading. And then similarly with mathematics, you'll see that we are still thirteen percentage points above the state average, we're in the medium group, and we are continuing to work on math. Math continues to be a subject that brings much dialogue to us because we have students at so many different ends of the spectrum and interest level. We have students in our schools who are in love with math and others who are learning to love math, and we have done some really exciting things. And so one of them that we've done is we have created some benchmark assessments in mathematics in secondary, really taking a look at algebra and Algebra II and trying to measure where student progress is. And so that is something that we embarked on last year. We also added coursework, you've heard us talk about that before, so we added data science to our math pathway at the high schools to give students an option that's divergent from the traditional pathway but provides that three, or excuse me, third year of mathematics for college eligibility. And then we also have exceptional professional development we're, we're doing across the schools and across the district and across grade levels in mathematics. It's a very collaborative area where we focus on best practices, and our teams have been coming together as we've come out of the pandemic to be able to do that work.
And then I'll turn it over to you.
So these standards are not reported in the same way, these are locally reported, so it is really either do you meet or not meet the standards? We were found to meet the standards in all of these areas as we report it to the state. And many of these come up in some of our discussions throughout the year, both kind of how our facilities are doing, issues of engagement around LCAP and other issues, climate surveys as we talk about students and student well-being, and Carrie and her team as, talk a lot about the courses and the courses of study, and you approve, of course, additions or changes to any of those. One of the things that the state does recognize, they've created a system of support to help districts or schools that have been found to be struggling, and based on the data, we will be found eligible for tech, this technical assistance specifically for the outcomes for our foster youth students. And so across the state, the depart, the county offices are part of this support system, and each county office kind of develops what those supports look like. So we will begin those conversations with our county office in the upcoming month. So at this exact moment, what that technical assistance will be, we're not sure. But internally, of course, we don't need to wait for that, for us to begin improvement efforts internally, and that, again, resharpenes our focus on what are the systems we have for foster youth? How do both they and our systems that serve them work together, and how do we strengthen what exists, and what do we need to change, if anything? And so that is already underway. Any questions?
Technical assistance, what, could you provide an example of what you mean by that, something more tangible?
Well, ish, I can ish, because they could change how they want to frame it. But types of things have been like offering, so the Department of Education usually provides, can provide a sum of money to county offices based on the number of schools or districts that qualify. So it could be a pass-through of some of those funds to try innovative or new things or deepen efforts that are going on. It could be a training that's offered at the county office that's, you know, tailored to this type of concern or issue. Those are kind of some of the opportunities that are likely to arise. A critical thought partner in terms of like really pressing us against kind of what are our intended outcomes and goals and what is the system and needing to articulate that and refine that. Those are the types of things we might expect to see.
Any other questions?
Oh, I put mine.
Oh, yes.
For the number of student groups in each level, could you explain the, what that means and maybe what groups those are?
Each one of them has their own separate report, so we could prepare something. But if you go to the website, you can click on each one of them, so of the six, they're always changing. It does depend on their specific data. But one of the reasons, for example, that foster youth will put us in technical assistance is they're in the low or very low too frequently, right? So if the same groups of students show up multiple times, that can be what like leads a district into technical assistance. So the fact that they're the only group that is coming up, we, we were concerned that maybe students with disabilities could also pull us, that means that they're falling into that category repeatedly across multiple indicators. But we could create a matrix of them all so you can quickly see. But it does require, each of them are separate and different depending on the indicator.
And it doesn't have to be now, but when you guys analyze it a little bit, if there could be kind of a granular report of what you're looking for, for those specific groups, that would be amazing. Because I feel like a lot of them are probably, like, you know, what we're seeing is these groups repeating over and over, and foster youth is probably popping up that many times, which is why we got flagged for that specifically. And then my other question was regarding the socio-economically disadvantaged English learners, foster youth. Do we know what that unduplicated percentage is for our district overall? Because I know, I don't, is it thirty-seven point seven or is it, because in the past historically was closer to forty-one or forty-three?
So this was last year. And sometimes the state changes kind of how they classify for socio-economically disadvantaged, so we actually expect that to change for this year. But as they calculated last year, these were our percentages. But I can't tell you, but I could come back and tell you, like, if there were dramatic swings or what we think that accounts for that.
Yeah, I'd love to see if there were trends because I feel like we hear a lot of empirical data about people leaving California and disadvantaged populations and kind of knowing how, just looking at it at the beginning of the year, some schools which previously had been closer to Title I moved further away, and other ones seem more impacted, kind of, and I, you know, six months from now is maybe better data, but just kind of knowing the lay of the land and how the district is changing.
No, you're right. Those are important facts to have, and we'll, we'll present something visually that allows that to be used and considered.
Any other questions?
I have a question about the suspension rate. I was wondering similarly if we can have that disaggregated by school site? And then I also was wondering if there, this might be a question. Do, I know that the numbers of students in our district that are either experiencing homelessness or kind of jumping back and forth, and our McKinney-Vento has got up, do we know, but that's separate than foster youth? Do we know if there is, there are additional group homes that are being added in our community or what maybe the factors could be that are raising that amount? Or what maybe the factors could be that are raising that amount?
That is definitely something we're investigating and thinking about because, again, because we know we have to really refine the services that we offer to that group of students. Both of, both of the ones that you mentioned, homeless and foster youth. I mean, there's such a kind of close link and we know that foster youth tend to experience homelessness at higher rates than many other students. So we are making sure we have those facts before we solve issues that may not actually be the underlying conditions that we have to address. So that level of information is something we are collecting. The state reports this information at the district level and the same type, these slides, these are available for every school. Now, of course, elementary wouldn't have the graduation rights, you know, they will be appropriate to the grade level span. But as a parent, community member, board member, any employee, you could go see your school or the district. This is the district level one, but we can certainly help facilitate gathering information on schools or making that more easy, easily accessible.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
If I can just jump in on the, kind of the foster youth question. We currently have sixty-two students who are identified as foster youth. And within the city of Costa Mesa, there are several group homes. Costa Mesa is considered a friendly city towards those kind of properties. And so there have been a couple of new group homes opened recently. And that's where the majority of students in our district who are foster youth are coming from is from placements in those group homes.
Thank you.
Next up, we will have the report from Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Orange County as January is National Mentoring Month, which is very exciting. I'm glad we're expanding and focusing on that.
So it's my pleasure to welcome up Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Orange County. And we have with us tonight Laura Markham, who has a brief presentation for us. This one? Okay. Just like that? Should come up. There you go.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much. Good evening Superintendent Smith, President Anderson and esteemed board members. It's truly an honor to be here. This is actually so exciting for me. My name is Laura Corona Markham. I have the privilege and honor of being the Chief Operating Officer at Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Orange County and the Inland Empire. I'm also a proud constituent of Costa Mesa. I have a two-year-old daughter and I know I'm going to blink and she'll be a student in your district. So also looking forward to that. So happy National Mentoring Month. January is a month and a season to really acknowledge all of our amazing volunteer mentors, to help spread the word about our mentoring mission and to really amplify our youth's voices during this month. So for those of you who are not as familiar with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, what makes us special is that we operate on a proven evidence-based service delivery model. We are about justice, equity, diversity and inclusion. And it's not a trend or an initiative. It's truly baked into the foundation of what we do. We are youth-centered, we are volunteer-driven and we are one-to-one, which means for every youth we serve, they have their very own specialized mentor. So as we aspire to create more connected communities where children and family are safe and where they thrive, I truly believe that we uplift communities by uplifting each other. So our four driving outcomes that Big Brothers, Big Sisters nationally and locally operate off of are social capital and connection, emotional and mental health. We promote education and career success and also encourage positive behavior and choices. So while we have been operating for nearly seventy years in Orange County, here's a snapshot of a decade of impact. So you're looking at over fifteen thousand youth impacted, over eight hundred thousand volunteer service hours and returning twenty-five million dollars in volunteerism to our community. Specifically for Newport Mesa Unified School District, we have mentored over five hundred students in your district. We are doing good things in Newport Mesa thanks to champions on the board and champions in our community. Wanted to highlight one of our programs, what we lovingly call High School BIGS. It's a site-based facilitated program that happens after school. We are on camp, elementary school campuses at Sonora, Victoria, Pollerino. With this service model, high school students are the mentors to elementary school students. So this is a win-win. Not only are we serving the high school student, we are creating future philanthropists, future leaders in our community, but we're also benefiting the elementary school student and showing them that they can one day pay it forward too. So what is our impact? Eighty-seven percent of our youth reported improved mental health. Eighty-four percent reported improved academic performance. Ninety-eight percent of our youth served by Big Brothers, Big Sisters graduate high school on time. And finally, my favorite stat, sixty-seven percent are the first in their family to go on to college. So with National Mentoring Month, I would be remiss if I did not ask you to join our mentoring movement. We definitely need mentors in the community. And what if every third grader had a mentor in their life? Had someone in their corner saying, I believe in you, I'm here for you, I have your back, you belong. Imagine that ripple effect for all of our communities. So I ask that you spread the word of National Mentoring Month. And thank you so much for the opportunity and for your advocacy.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Trish Crane.
Thank you for your presentation and we really enjoyed the data. It's pretty amazing and impressive. What high schools are connected to the three elementary schools that you had mentioned?
Yeah, great question. We recruit high school students from Estancia, Costa Mesa, CDM and Newport Harbor.
Okay. That's great.
Can I have a question? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to report on district-wide facility master plans. Very exciting. Mr. Trader.
It's my pleasure to welcome Ada Wiggins. She's our facility director. And we're making great progress as a progress report on your, on our priority, your priority, to make sure that we fulfill that on time, on schedule.
Good evening, President Barto, Superintendent Smith, trustees, cabinet and our guests.
You gave me an upgrade. I got moved down here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say Barto? Anderson, sorry. And I looked at you too. So I don't know if you guys caught it, but when Jeff introduced me, he said Ada Wiggins. So there's been a name change. I've been married for a while, but I promised I would do it by the end of last year. It took me a little while. So now you'll see my name as Ada Wiggins moving forward. Okay, so we're here tonight to talk about where we are in the process of the master plan and understanding what the tasks are included with that plan. So here's an outline of what we're going to be discussing in more detail. The research and discovery, the conditions of our facilities, development of the educational specifications, which is a hearty task to take on. What our outreach will look like in the community and schools, as well as other district departments. Our estimation of costs for these projects that we identify. And then prioritization and implementation. And so what does that laundry list of projects look like? And how will we be able to work together to identify when and which projects get moved forward? And then what does that deliverable look like? What is the actual work product end up being? And how could we access that and utilize that moving forward? So the first step is just getting all the data. And so what we've been doing since we had board approval for hiring DLR Group, who is a San Diego-based architect, is we've established our team that is going to meet with them on a recurring basis. So that really is, at the bare minimum, is the facilities department and the architects and then the maintenance department as needed. Because we will be collaborating with them as well as the other departments. But to have the maintenance department in every discussion isn't necessarily necessary. So we're going to take the lead on that. We're working to develop the overall schedule. And when we say commit here, I probably shouldn't have put that there quite yet because we need your feedback in order to be able to commit to a schedule which we're looking for today. As part of that process, just identifying what those groups are that we are going to reach out to as we go through the process. And then this next one, review existing digital archive plans. So most districts have warehouse of construction documents and rolls of plans. And we are fortunate enough to have digitized everything that we ever had on paper. So we have no more paper plans. We have them all organized by projects, by site, by year, by title. And so we have this healthy database that the architect is able to tap into to understand what has been, what has been constructed on our sites, when it has been constructed and how those projects have been completed. One of those things that is necessary to do as you complete projects is to have DSA approval on the completion of the construction. And so with these documents, we'll be able to demonstrate to the architect which projects are either ongoing. So for example, the student gathering area at Enson, we have a DSA A number open, but we're not in construction yet, but it's planned for. So they're going to see the A number and it's going to show that it's not closed. So we're working with them to understand what all those projects are. And if there are any old projects that weren't closed out, you know, say forty years ago, we've worked on that. Now, since we have a DSA inspector as a staff member of the facilities department, we've been able to close out a majority of those projects and we have a handful, which is record-breaking in the state, so. And then the next task or part of this task is to go campus to campus and walk the sites and meet with the principal, meet with the office staff, meet with the custodial staff, meet with nutrition services and get their feedback. Okay, so this is, this is an extension of that. So we'll be looking at the conditions of the facilities, the need for improvements, the potential expansion and, and the next one, the necessity downsize go hand in hand. This was something we were asked to elaborate on a little bit, so I'll do that here as well. So the need to expansion, we have, we have a lot of new programs on campus. We have a lot of new support staff on campus. And so what we're tending to find is that we're utilizing entire classrooms for support staff that could potentially be better served in an office or small room to collaborate. And then the other part of that is that while we're utilizing excess space on campus because of declining enrollment, we are potentially maintaining a relocatable or portable building that wasn't intended to be on campus as long as we have. And so looking at potentially repurposing space and making the space appropriate for the program needs rather than just utilizing a facility that we have just because it's there. And then, of course, most importantly, equity. What that looks like from campus to campus is different because we offer different programs at different campuses. So task two, this is the facility assessment where we will be going out to the school sites and meeting with the site administrators and the custodians and whoever else they choose to bring along. And I know it's small and I know it's blurry and that's probably intentional. But really, this is a draft schedule. So we're looking to get out to the sites starting at the end of this month. And it's a, it's a pretty thorough analysis. It's not just come meet and have a chit chat. It's let's talk about what works, well, let's talk about what isn't working. So with the, I have regular standing meetings with secondary ed and not, not the elementaries because we don't have as many big projects there. But as we've been meeting with them, we've been asking them, put your laundry list together, put your wish list together. As you're walking around the site, just make a note in your phone for things so that when we come out, you don't forget to talk to us about those things. So we're planning on starting that at the end of this month. And depending on how those go and scheduling and availability of the sites, we're hoping we can get it done in eight to twelve weeks. Development of the educational specifications. So really, this process is super intensive on the educator's side. This is really engaging with all of the departments that our educators support, special ed, secondary ed, early childhood, extended learning, nutrition services, and understanding what programs are we offering across the district? What is that program supposed to achieve? And what do you need in a facility to achieve it? So if you're talking about a maker space, you say, well, we're going to have probably thirty kids in the classroom. We're going to need tables of ten. We're going to need a digital screen with a projector. We're going to need water. We're going to need all these type of things. We're going to need a bay for some computers. So you really do a narrative of what is needed. And then we can apply that to an actual facility. So when we go to implement on a campus, then we know what kind of space we need and we can work with the educational specification. So this is going to be extremely labor-intensive and, but I think it's great. And it's just going to bridge the gap between, you know, facilities just going and doing things and not necessarily having that program to drive the project. So we're looking forward to this process. And then I will say, on the last item here, it says eliminate oversights that are expensive to correct once construction is complete. And that's really, we don't want to miss any program. So if we know that there's a culinary program at Newport Harbor and we don't talk to the culinary program and we go on and we go design this facility and we haven't incorporated that into a master plan, this is, this ed spec process will help us eliminate oversight. So the outreach. So there are different groups that we are looking at as far as our outreach. And this is more typical of what every district may do. And we know that we always tailor things to the needs of our district. So as far as the site outreach, we kind of talked about that. As far as the site level goes with site personnel, but that doesn't necessarily represent maybe the PTA or foundations. We know our foundations are very active, whether it's an athletic foundation or an academic foundation. So we're looking at how to structure that and potentially have two committees from the site, whether it's a site committee, a sub-site committee and how those are put together. And then, of course, at every milestone, we're going to be coming to you, doing these presentations to update you so you understand where we are in the process and see if we need to readjust our engagement, our priorities or our timeline. Because meeting with potentially thirty-two different sites the district has and having three or four meetings at thirty-two sites could be cumbersome. So we are strategizing of potentially also having some zone meetings where we think they're appropriate. Oh, so here we go. Here's where we talked about the zone meetings. And so we've been working with our public relations office to talk about how we're going to get that message out and not necessarily only rely on, you know, principals sending flyers or their, their electronic media to teachers and to staff. So we are going to have the community forum that we spoke about. Even if we do other outreach meetings, we also think by zone would be a good idea. So that was what we were anticipating. We will have our facilities website updated. And with this particular architect, it's going to be something much more robust than you're used to seeing on our facilities website. Basically, on every Friday, all facilities people go in and type their updates and boom, voila, that's what we did for the week. But this is going to be a much more interactive link to the architect's progress on the projects. But this is going to be a much more interactive link to the architect's progress on the projects. So, that'll be helpful to anyone who's interested in participating. And then, of course, we're going to have the ongoing communication. Annette will speak with the media and try to have people really engage in the process. As you can see tonight, we didn't have any speakers on it quite yet. So, you know, it'd be nice to just have some people supporting the effort. And then, survey or thought exchange. I know thought exchange can be quite complex. We've done that before. And understanding the data is interesting. So, we'll entertain that idea as well. We did get a lot of feedback, though, doing thought exchange, much more than in-person meetings. So, cost estimating. This is basically understanding the projects that we develop as part of the master plan and putting numbers to it. And as part of this project, as we fold into these projects, we're also looking at not just the pretty shiny things, but the things that the students were talking about, our student board members, thank you for speaking, the restrooms, the roofs, right? The field conditions. We know those are all things that they see and touch every day, well, except for the roofs. I thought that was interesting.
Very tall.
So, we will be folding that into it, and then we will be able to have an interactive master plan that basically, once we have our entire list of projects, you can filter, you can choose all elementary school MPRs. And you can say, okay, how much is that going to cost? Okay, it's forty million dollars. How many years would we have to phase that in? Okay, here's your total project cost. All fields of the high schools. You pick those, and so you can kind of just check off the list of what projects you want to prioritize, to see what it's going to cost, and then see how we could potentially fund it. So, it's going to be very, very useful, and it will be a living document. And we will be able to add things in as priorities also come up, and remove things from it as we complete projects.
That interactive piece, is that a software that is being used in that industry? It's kind of fascinating.
They have, so I don't know what the name of it is, but on several of the architects who had presented for the master plan, they had a variety of options. This one seemed to be the, you know, most user-friendly, where anybody could just get in there and start picking projects and seeing how much it costs, and it'll even project escalation. And then, of course, we would talk about phasing based off of the funding, and then also just having resources to manage those projects, bringing construction managers in, and how to build those projects out. But I think this effort is going to give you all an easy tool to make decisions, and easier. I know there's still a team of you. But to be able to kind of see it, and see what else is popping up. Right now, we're working on projects that we, you know, have been identified as a priority, but it doesn't necessarily mean every school's getting that at the same time, or that they're even planned for one, two, three, four, or five, right? And so, this will help us, kind of guide us into planning and really implementing instead of reacting. Okay. So, I know I talk around this presentation, but I eventually get to the end of it and really covered everything in there. I don't like to talk to all the words that we put on the paper. It's just a resource for you to have later. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, Trustee Wigan?
Thank you. Thank you. This is really detailed, and I love to see how far along we are in the process, and, you know, with the architect that we did choose, all the features that we're going to be able to see. I have a couple quick questions. So, on the, how involved, I guess, with the, on the wish list? Will us as trustees be, do we kind of see that at the end, or do you want us to walk the sites with you? Or what does that look like for our involvement? What are you expecting us from us?
So, I think we typically would bring to you the results of some of the site assessments and analysis, and get some feedback of you all, just kind of like we are tonight, if you had questions about, well, we absolutely need to have every student board member as part of the committee, the site committee, kind of looking for that direction by presenting to you what we anticipated, and then hearing from you the other things that we need to do as milestones to keep you informed. So, I would, just like on some of our other projects that we do now, we bring things to you as a conceptual approval. We bring them to you when we have a budget and a design. And then, we bring them to you when I have a full construction budget and a schedule. So, I think there's going to be increments where we're bringing the results to you for you to kind of guide us. I don't want to say that we are just stuck in this way, this is the way we're going to do it, because I think we do need to be a little bit fluid. But we intended on, as we learn and we gather the information from the sites and the communities, that we bring that back to you, so you can hear what the feedback is, and then provide some direction. And whether it be through West or directly in an action item, whatever the rules are.
And I would just add that I think the most important part of that is prioritizing the projects, and that will be a hundred percent your work. Once, after many check-ins, we've brought this data to you, then, as she said, the easy work starts of all of you deciding how we prioritize all of those projects.
Okay, thank you. And then, so I noticed that there have been, like, let's put it, for example, the shade structures in elementary schools, where there was foundations that wanted to fund it earlier or not. And as, you know, as we're going back and talking to our foundations and groups, will we be able to see, say, hey, look, this is the timeline. Here's a timeline of when, you know, all elementary schools will have a shade structure. So, foundation, it's going to be in the next three years, save your money, and use it for another project, for instance. Because I would hate for some people to use their money, and then, you know, it's something that the district's going to be funded.
Absolutely. And you know that I've worked with you on foundation projects before, and that is my message exactly. My message was, you know, as much as we know that our foundations are super-supportive, and they will fund projects for independent sites, when we get a request for a shade structure at a particular site, we look and we say, okay, if we do it here, how do I do it at every other school eventually to make it equitable? And what other things do I need to consider? When, I can't just let somebody say, this is where I want it, and that's where I want it, and that's where it needs to be. There's other things that will also be part of this effort, which is understanding the full impact of UTK. So, where we think we have lunch tables now, and where they want shade structures now, I'm looking at it saying, well, actually, we're going to probably have to expand that playground. The lunch area is probably going to end up being over here, and it may be adjacent to the upper-grade playground, and it ends up being in a completely different place. So, I would hate to walk down the road where we led you to believe that that's something that you should do without those other things. And so, we know that the sites who have asked us and have funding from their sites, or some commitment to do that, are probably a little frustrated with us right now, because we are trying to get things into the master plan. And we are trying to get the UTK portion of that in there, so that we don't have you spend money and ask us why we did that. I mean, it'd be one thing to let you spend the money and get it ahead of everyone, and the foundation paid for it, and then we paid for everyone else's. It'd be another if we let you pay for it, and then we asked you to move it.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
So, we're trying to avoid those type of things happening. And so, we are asking that everyone kind of, you know, if you can, let's go through the facility master plan process. Let's put our wish list in there, and then we can prioritize, so every school gets something similar in a phased process. I mean, we're not going to do necessarily a shade structure at every school over one summer.
Right.
But we did solar over two and a half years. So, you know, I mean, we can do a lot.
So, by the time we get our, the facility master plan, that will also have timelines. So, say, like, by the end of the year, we'll kind of understand where that's going, just so I can communicate this to kind of foundations to, you know, put a little hold on their activity.
So, the facility master plan will be a menu from you to order from, in order for the board to say, we would like to order shade structures. Okay, Jeff, do you have the money for shade structures? Yes. Okay. Then Facilities gets a budget to plan out and construct those projects. So, it's going to take another action after even accepting the master plan as the list of projects. The prioritization still will come at a later date that would be board-approved in a formal action.
Okay, thank you. That makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. That was very clarifying.
Yes, Trustee Crane.
So, to me, intentional is the word that is coming to mind when you presented this, because Trustee Wigan had a very good point. Hey, you know, foundation wants to do this and put this structure, but wait a second, we're still intentionally studying the site because there are other considerations. So, I do think that this is going to be really important, which is also in this packet, is making sure that we do have site outreach, including the community, having the town hall meetings, including our PIO, and it's just going to be intentional, and that's basically a responsible thing to do. It's a good job.
And we have the right team. Our architect is, you know, has done quite a few of these master plans, and knows how to set up the conversation to get the input that you want, so that you can actually have an action item. Rather than just let, it's not just an open forum, everybody stick a sticky on the board, which sometimes is a good idea, but really to gear it towards, you know, agendized topics to help them focus, you know, their efforts into specific areas. So, I think we'll be successful in those meetings.
And our parent community doesn't necessarily understand that we do have thirty-three sites. We are, we own millions and millions of square footage of indoor space, outdoor space. So, it's complicated. And so, the more we're out there explaining, educating, and being transparent, I think the better off we are getting this done in the right way.
Absolutely.
Trustee Murphy?
Yeah, so, so that sort of answered some of my questions. How is this getting communicated to principals? Because, just to Trustee Wigan's point, so, I, you know, I'm involved with schools that have foundations as well. We've been sitting on money. We don't have, we're not getting great feedback from the principals necessarily on, like, when we should spend it, how we can spend it. We're doing murals instead of shade structures, which seems to be the prudent decision right now. I guess that's the other part of my question. So, when we're getting asked what we should spend this money on now, what should we be saying?
So, the way that these projects work, if it's something new, then the principals know to come to facilities. And whether they put in a work order for a shade structure, or they call our office, they'll come directly to us and ask us, you know, is this project feasible? Is it not feasible? We have meetings with their foundations. We will come talk to their foundations if they call us, and they say, hey, can you help us navigate with the foundation? They have this money. Can you help them understand the process? So, really, it is on the principal, but those are for the regular projects. For the master plan project, we knew that we were hiring the architect. Over the holidays, we worked on putting the proposed schedule together and this presentation together to get in front of you, and so that we would be able to have a site visit schedule proposed. And so, we had met, I met with Carrie and a few others, not necessarily on this topic, but every time I can get anyone important in the room, I'm telling them about, hey, this is coming, hey, this is coming. And so, we intended on announcing it at our next principals' meeting. And so, where all the principals will be, we'll talk about, you know, the master plan itself, and then the expectation of having these site visits happen. We have other site visits that are happening throughout the district. And so, we knew that if we put out too much information before the holidays, it might not get read, it might be forgotten. So, we intend on putting out a memo of all the things that are happening to the site principals, as well as telling them at the principals' meeting. And then, we will independently, the Facilities Department, will be contacting every principal as we schedule those site visits.
So, in theory, if somebody wanted to spend something right now, it would be smaller projects, less, less concrete, more pretty. I mean, like, is that sort of what you're saying?
I think so. I mean, depending on what it is. You know, there are some things that they've come up with where it's like, okay, that's so far out of the way, there's no way we're changing that area, you know, let them go ahead. I mean, not that I want to have these everywhere, but Gaga ball carts, right?
Oh, they want another one.
See? So, there were things that were like, okay.
What's wrong with those? Those things are fantastic.
I guess the site staff has a hard time keeping the kids behaving. It's a lot of work for them. So, I would just encourage the principal to call Facilities, and we'd be happy to meet with them and guide them.
I think the message here, and kudos to the board, because this is one of the board's priorities that's now a district priority, that we finally have this Facilities and Maintenance Master Plan, multi-year plan. And the intent is, we're going to slow down a little bit, like that coveyism, we're going to sharpen the saw, so we're going to be more efficient, more intentional moving forward. But there certainly are some small projects that, we're not stopping the work. But overall, we're really saying, let's take a look at this, so that we don't make any mistakes. But then, I'd also say, and I've heard you have some great ideas, about developing not the facilities, but the human capital on our campuses. And if foundations want to help us do that, we're always looking for supports in professional development, supports like that, because you can never get too much of that human capital development. So, kudos to all of you for making this a priority for us.
Yay.
Can we go with you to that assessment, the assessments?
That would be up to Dr. Smith.
Oh, for our zone sites, like our sites?
We'll talk about it.
Yes, to me, I mean, I just want to follow the rules.
I just need to walk during the day, that's all.
Get your steps in.
I had a couple. For the site outreach, I just, we talked a bit about the principals, and we talked about, you know, different parent groups and community groups, and I just wanted to make sure that we include staff in that. Our staff is on campus every day. They know every inch of their campus, and I think at times, they haven't been included in that process. So, I just want to make sure that we're really cognizant of including, and at the beginning, like, day one, including staff. And then, I was wondering, where you were talking about the reporting back at major milestones, do you, do we anticipate that being, like, every six months? Do we, what is the kind of rhythm?
So, I think what we're going to do moving forward from here is, in addition to the site visits that we had, the blurry draft schedule, would be to put together a proposed outreach plan that talks about all of those different groups, and then put it on a calendar so we can see how it projects out the project, to see if that's appropriate for moving forward. And I was thinking that we would be able to do that, you know, because board items are due so soon. My board items, I think, are due tomorrow to my admin for the next board meeting. So, it would likely be in March, that we could bring back kind of, this is what the full schedule will look like for community outreach, and then behind the scenes, all the stuff the architect has to do with that information, to help understand what that project schedule would ultimately be with the outreach that we anticipate. And just knowing holidays, summer gets very challenging, right? And so, try to get some of those meetings in before summer. So, there's just a lot of things that we'll have to work with. But we can come up with a schedule to put it on a piece of paper, so you can see it, and then we can adjust from there.
Wonderful. I think that will help too with the foundation. I mean, that will be really helpful. And then, lastly, I'm just really excited that we're doing this kind of in sequence with our budget study session, so then we really have a firm understanding when we do have that interactive piece. We can see where the money, you know, potentially could go. We can have discussions about that and really make informed decisions. So, thank you for helping us have both of them together. I think with having those in the same semester, the same quarter, is going to be really huge for us. So, thank you so much.
And then, I'd just like to offer that, when we do come back with the schedule, that I can have the architect come in and maybe do a little demonstration of what another master plan looks like that they've completed, to show you that element that I'm talking about. I just wanted to get in front of you first and kind of get all this information, rather than having a consultant speak to you.
For sure, that's a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our legislative and state budget item.
You'll know that about a year ago, I brought to a contract for Capital Advisors to help us with advocacy at the state level, specifically around issues like this. Somewhat recently, the LAO published their report, and then we just got the governor's budget proposal. And when some of you asked me a year ago, you know, why this firm, I told you that no one is connected, as they are in the education world on on these issues. And so I was meeting with Kevin Gordon, who I'll introduce, he's the president of Capital Advisors, and he got a call from the Associated Press today. So they're calling Kevin to ask him what he thinks of the governor's proposal related to public education, which will be reported out all over the state. And that that's the kind of support that we get. Certainly, we saw that with the arts funding that I know you're going to address today. But I'd like to introduce to you, so he can discuss the budget proposal and where we're headed, Kevin Gordon, president of Capital Advisors.
Madam Board President and members, trustees and Superintendent Smith, it's a pleasure to be with you today. I just sort of start out, because I I know some of you, I've known some of you, I know that you know some of the work that I've done at school board, for school boards across the state. But I started my career as a lobbyist for school boards across California. So our disposition is a firm, and it's not popular for everybody, but it's decidedly the perspective of governance. So the governing boards and its superintendents, we primarily represent. So clearly, we work with our labor partners up in Sacramento on different issues. But when it comes down to a number of issues, we're not always in complete agreement. And again, it's because, and we're real straightforward about it, we represent a governance perspective. And, you know, when we have a year like we had in the current fiscal year, when you have the kind of year-over-year increase that's invested in education, there is the possibility that everybody does okay. And there's no reason to be fighting about stuff between management and labor as much. But, you know, there are other kinds of issues and we we see those. But in the legislative arena, we're definitely have that governance hat on. So I would just sort of put that out there, because I get asked by board members who have really strong ties to our labor partners, and I totally respect that. But I do let them know, you know, when we go to lobby, we have that hat on, because at the end of the day, we're accountable to you as a board and the superintendent. So I thought I'd start with that. The second thing is, is giving you this update, and the timing is great, the superintendent's been saying, hey, I need you to be down here, and we're really committed. I mean, our role for you is to be in front of you, giving you guys updates and really pursuing the interests of this district uniquely in Sacramento. And so when we landed on the date, we knew it was the day the governor would, under the constitution, be actually talking about the state budget. So, you know, I'm really excited about the fact that I get to talk to you guys sort of in person, a little bit of an overview of what's going on with the budget. But really importantly, it's, I was looking at a lot of the analysis that had come out, and I'm sure you guys have seen some of it that's coming out from some of the different associations, is that there tends to be this broad brush commentary about what's going on with the budget. And you'll read it and you'll say, but that's not Newport Mesa. Like, the classic example is in the budget, I saw a comment about the governor's commitment to TK. And one of the big frustrations that we have is that the governor, you know, and he's done a lot in terms of investments in education, but stands up and says, I'm deeply committed to TK and these four-year-olds and making sure that when we get to full implementation, every four-year-old has this opportunity. But for a district like this, despite the fact of what our per pupil funding is, that in order to get where they want us to go, we would actually have to consider cutting something else that's great for kids in order to meet the objective, because he hasn't quite fulfilled the promise, which is that we're going to fund this for every single four-year-old. But there are at least a hundred districts around the state, community-funded districts, that don't get a dime of that. So you have to make priorities that you shouldn't have to choose between. So it's a matter of that our job is going to be to give voice to those unique issues that affect this district specifically. And so when I talk about the budget overall, I want to do it through the lens of what are the advantages of one pot of money and the disadvantages that we actually have to look for as we pursue the interests of this district up at the Capitol Building. And so that's going to be part of our objective. So obviously, when we looked at, there was a nonpartisan legislative analyst report in November, that's always a really big deal, because it gives you sort of the groundwork for what we're anticipating regarding the economy. And it's more important now than it used to be, because some years ago, and we're talking about just maybe five, six years ago, the governor's office, where they would make their economic sort of assumptions about things, and where the nonpartisan legislative analysts did their economic analysis, they drew them from different sources. Today, and for the last basically five or six years, they've been drawing them from the same sources. So that's why the numbers, when the LAO comes out with them, you know, in November, and you look at a governor's budget over literally the last six years or so, the numbers are really close. So I pay a lot of attention to that November report, because I know it's the forerunner to what we need to get prepared for. And when we saw the legislative analyst said, we think we've got a serious revenue problem in the state. And knowing that the fundamentals of Prop 98 is that we all celebrate when it's on the way up, because it's forty cents out of every dollar that goes into Prop 98, in terms of resources we have to spend. But when it's on the way down, it's a forty cents on a dollar hit on the available money to to pay for things that are education priorities. So when the legislative analyst did that, and then we roll forward to Jan. 10 today, and we look at what the governor had, it is interesting that his overall revenue projections are better than the legislative analyst. And there's some interesting, interesting reasons, nuances that are to that. Like, for instance, one of the things that the legislative analyst said is, look, we're having such a drop in revenue and Prop 98, school funding's connected to that. The only way we're going to be able to hold even and pay for the cost of living allowance, the COLA, that we that keeps us, you know, stable with inflation, is that we're going to have to dip into the K-12 Education Rainy Day Fund, which has its own complexities to it. But the point is, is there's a big fat rainy day fund, and we're going to have to use it, and we're going to have to use a lot of it. The governor's budget, which I was pretty surprised about today, doesn't touch the rainy day fund. So I'm like, how did he pull that off? The way he pulled it off is there are three different elements of the budget. That for any of you that have been on the board for very long, and for those of you that are new, I just sort of tell you that the way the budget, the way the safeguards used to work is, they had a pathetic state reserve, almost no real reserve. And I always thought it was such a double standard, because they wanted us to have a good reserve, but the state had no reserve. We had no Prop 98, no school reserve. And whenever they got money, they wanted to spend all of it and never save any of it. So what happened, a lot of it under Jerry Brown, is we established the rainy day fund. Now we've got a state rainy day fund that's almost thirty billion dollars on the general fund. A rainy day fund for K-12 education that's eight point five billion dollars. And the biggest thing, and this is the reason why they didn't have to touch the reserve, is how much this state spends in its budgets that if you've been on the board for the last six or seven years, we constantly are being given one-time money. Now, that's fine, honestly, for Newport Mesa, it's really good. The more they put into one-time money, we actually get that money. When they pour it into ongoing permanent programs or put it into LCFF in a way that the characteristic doesn't match the characteristic of the kids we serve, we lose what we want if for them to put more money into one-time kinds of purposes. So what would happen is, the way we got one-time money is, starting with Jerry Brown, he would budget for a certain dollar amount of revenue he would expect to come in. And everybody knew that the estimate he was making was really low. We were absolutely going to get more money than he was going to budget for, he was going to budget really low. So I always called it under-promise, over-deliver. So then when the money would turn out to come in, and we'd all go, duh, we knew it was going to come in, that overage, that difference would be allocated as one-time money into the billions of dollars. And we started getting it every year, billions of dollars. For almost twelve years in a row, we've gotten big one-time infusions of money, and it's been pretty beneficial to this district, because we've been able to share in that chunk of money that came to us. This will be, so there's the state reserve, there's the Prop 98 Reserve. The way the governor's dealing with us is some modest rearrangement of some of the money, you can call it a cut, but it's very little. Combined with the fact that he just doesn't spend the one-time money that they expected would be ongoing next year, they just stopped spending one-time money. That's almost five, six billion dollars of solution right there, and not touching that Prop 98 Reserve. So I was kind of surprised, I looked at it, it was pleasant to see the way they achieved that. But the one thing we have to be really sober to in this district is, for the first time in a dozen years, don't be looking for any big one-time money to come to us in the budget. In addition, and this is probably a good thing, no really big, and when I say big, because the governor and legislature have redefined what big is. I mean, I used to think a billion dollars was a lot. This is just crazy money they've been allocating out statewide over the last two years in the billions of dollars. Don't look for any significant new ongoing programs in the budget, and there really aren't any. There's a couple of little things, but nothing big. The reason why I say that's kind of good is they've thrown so much at us, including the things that are not funded, but are sort of mandated, like the TK obligation, but bigger than that, the STIRS-PERS obligations that are not funded, that it gives us a chance to have time to do right by some of the things where we're supposed to be implementing, without having them dream up another bunch of programs that they want us to try to implement. So it's probably good that we get a little breathing room on the idea of a whole bunch more new programs that they're trying to throw at us. So for the for the budget year, the year that starts on July 1st, they're projecting a deficit of about twenty-two point five billion dollars. It's important to watch what I call sort of the top-line number, which is close to thirty billion dollars. And the way the superintendent and I have worked together for a long time, would always look at budgets, is don't just tell me about next year. Tell me, we know there's been a decline in revenue in the current year, and we're halfway into this current year. What are you doing to us to balance that budget? And when you look at the current year, they actually closed the books, if you will, going even a year back, so it's a three-year period. Over the three-year period, they got a thirty billion dollar problem. So twenty-two point five is the headline you're going to read in all the papers, oh, I got a twenty-two point five billion dollar problem. We have a little bit bigger problem than that. And the way they solve the current year problem, which I'm not crazy about, but we actually have to sort of be very wary of, there were two block grants that were part of the budget that was passed last summer. One of them was more helpful to Newport Mesa than the other. The first one, which was the big one, you know, eight billion dollar plus, was the one that went out decidedly more predicated on big concentrations of poverty. And it was a proxy for getting money, and I get it, you know, for districts that have large numbers of kids in poverty, but LCFF is supposed to address a lot of that. But they went and piled a big old block grant in addition to that, which this district didn't get as much of that, those resources. But the three point six billion dollar block grant, the smaller block grant, which is a pretty good chunk of money, we did get our share of that money, and it's significant. It was called the Arts, Music and Instruction Materials Block Grant. It was, when they passed it, I said, I said, this is the block grant which will be spent if we do it right, and everything except for the things that are named in the block grant. And the reason why is because we argued, hey, you screwed up and you didn't put money into STIRS and PERS. So the legislature at the last minute went, uh, let's say that bag of money, that block grant money, let's let every district that's got STIRS-PERS obligations that are unfunded by the state, use that pot of money to deal with your STIRS-PERS money. Well, the STIRS-PERS problem is so huge that it would pretty much suck up almost all of that. And it's a bait and switch that the legislature makes, but you guys have to deal with it on the front lines. People say, what are you doing with our arts and music money? And they say, well, that's the money you should use for STIRS and PERS. It's just, you know, politics. So the bottom line is, is that the governor is going to take out of that three point six billion, one point two billion in today's announcement, he's taking away. That's a problem in the middle of this year. Especially if you guys were budgeting or contemplating using a big chunk of it, for STIRS-PERS offsets, it's a problem. And even if it's out of what maybe you were planning to spend on art and music this year, it cheats you out of that money and you make commitments. I get budgeting for next year and beyond, when you have the latitude to shift things. But to pull the rug out from on you in the middle of the current year is always problematic. So it's something to be very much attentive to, it's the kind of thing we need to try to give voice to. The interesting thing is that it tells you about, in the budget process, people forget about how people, really smart people, forget about the way the budget they wrote works. So the rationale for taking the one point two billion away from the Art, Music and Instruction Materials Block Grant was because we passed Prop 28, which is an art and music funding source that's permanent, it's wonderful. But that's how they rationalize taking the one point two billion dollars away. And I was just thinking, well, hold on a second. When you gave districts the only allocation of money to deal with STIRS and PERS, a three point six billion dollar pot of money, and we knew we would have that ballot measure money to invest in art and music the way we ought to in the future, and then you come and justify lowering the block grant, which you say we could use for something else, because we got this other music. It's mixing these things up and going off again the titles of these programs, rather than what they knew we as school districts were going to probably try to turn to, to utilize. So we've got challenge in these two areas. The couple of things we want to focus on, I mean, overall, it's a crazy good budget still in the reality of these kinds of losses in revenue. I mean, for us to be able to have no big cuts to any of the major programs, so the investment in early education, including preschool, the investments that matter to us as a district, like two billion dollars in special ed that actually gets placed on the base of special ed, which is what we care about, right? The money that they invested in transportation for the first time in forty years, they're paying attention to school transportation. This district has, stands to benefit. From these directed categories of spending that we have, that are not done through LCFF, has a direct benefit on this district in those key areas, and it fully funds all of them, including the multi-year phase-in of the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program, and exactly as they meant it last summer, no cutting back. And the ledge analyst last November actually posed the possibility that maybe we ought not do the full implementation of that, maybe we could score some savings by not doing that. And the governor goes, no, no, I got to be committed to that, we're protecting that. So all the major new investments are protected in the budget, it's just some of this other stuff that isn't. And even though, you know, our job is advocates for public education. So it might sound a little like whining, but we have to raise the issue about what happens when you cut that block grant. We just have to make sure that as policymakers, they know the consequences so that we get that apart, that across. So the other part that's good is a budget that holds us fairly harmless, but funds an eight point one percent COLA. It will be the largest COLA that we've ever gotten by virtue of what's in the law in my entire career. We've never gotten eight point one percent guaranteed in statute. And I will tell you, for those of you who have a long memory, in the year 2000, we got a ten percent increase, but it was because they were making up for years where they had not fully funded the COLA. It was not what we were entitled to that year. And last year, the COLA was thirteen point two six percent, not, but more on LCFF, not on the other programs that we all care about. We got some of it, but not thirteen point two six. It was a six point five, six percent COLA, that was the COLA. So an eight percent COLA is great, but guess what the formula in law says we're entitled to? The estimate by the legislative analyst says it should be eight point seven percent. So again, not to sound too greedy, but we're advocates for kids. We want to make sure that if you get a COLA that's required in state law, if it applies to LCFF, great for LCFF districts, but for us, we care about what that COLA is for special ed and is spread across all those categorical programs that we get in this district. So we have to pay attention to that, and it's worth raising and arguing. And I honestly believe, the legislature seems always predisposed to outwit and, you know, one-up the governor every year. And if they want to do that with COLA and make sure it's fully funded at the higher number, we're going to be there. Now, the governor did say today, eight point one percent is what he's putting in the budget, but he thinks that's what the COLA would be to satisfy law. The LAO is saying, nice try, we think it's closer to eight point seven percent. So what the, I talked to the legislative analyst today, and he was telling me that when we get to the May revision, the governor's kind of made this commitment. So we all have So we all have to be really vocal if somehow he backs off of it and tries to give us something less than that full COLA amount. And again, in this district, it's extremely important that we get that as it applies across categorical programs. And there are some categoricals that they've never given the COLA to in prior years. We need to keep advocating that if there's a program that we have that's not getting the COLA, when we work with our labor partners and they hear a COLA amount and it isn't spread across all programs, well, we don't pay our employees one set of compensation based on your program didn't get the COLA and some that you do. It goes across every single employee. We need to make sure that COLA is reflected across all those programs. So that's important. And then the other issue that sort of touch on was this $300 million the governor puts in. It's one of the few places where he puts new money into the budget for what he calls an equity multiplier. This is just flat out an effort to try to get more money to LEAs based again on poverty. And one of the things that I have been really outspoken with, with the administration, is that every time they came up with another great idea, a way to take a bag of money and distribute it out to districts, but it only goes to districts with kids in high concentrations of poverty. I mean, my heart goes out to them, but that's why we created LCFF. LCFF already has a decidedly favorable distribution of money for poverty. And if you've got those kids, you're going to get the money, and we all get that. But every time we have a growth in revenue, is it really fair that we bypass everybody else and just create new money for districts with that characteristic? And then what are the districts that get all this money doing with it? Is there the kind of accountability that we ought to have for that? So amongst the things, this is kind of the last major program, that we've tried to really articulate is the other issue is, Governor, Legislature, do you love some poor kids more than others? That when you allocate money just in super high concentrations of poverty, and by sort of the luck of what political jurisdiction you live in, it's called a school district, you could live in a school district where some of your sites, your individual sites, or even a feeder pattern has high concentrations of poverty, but because you're in a bigger district, you'll never get a dime of that extra money. So one of the good things about this program, and we're going to be looking at real closely to see if we might benefit by it, is that it's site-focused. So that if you're getting bypassed on concentration grant funding in the budget, we're going to start looking at sites and where there's concentration of poverty at school sites. And maybe we'll get a chance to get some of this funding for some of our kids that deserve it. And part of this came out of a report I called them with plenty of opinions. PPIC, the Public Policy Institute of California, did a report. And I just thought, everybody ignored it, but it's almost two years old. And it raised that issue that I just raised about, do you really love some poor kids better than that? I think they ought to do a supplemental grant that's really big and give that for every poor kid instead of this kind of idea of concentration that's really built, I think, just to favor big urban districts. I can think of one a little north from us. So, so that's, those are some of the major issues. And then finally, facilities. I was surprised, I expected, and one of the newspapers had printed something the other day about sort of my prognosis, that the governor would take his package of proposals around school facilities, which was, we're not going to do a school bond measure statewide in 2022. You look at the mood of voters, you look at how tight pocketbooks are, you look at the price of everything, you look at inflation, not a good time to go to the ballot. Let's pay as you go. We got a ton of money. So the governor commits over $4 billion to school facilities. But in the fine print, he actually only committed $1.3 billion in this year, and he didn't. $2 billion was committed for next year, quote unquote, if we have the money. Well, the minute I saw the budget problem, that that's going to be gone. And then about 800 million, almost 900 million the year after that. So I figured both those chunks of change are going to be gone. The governor kept it in. It's, he shaved it by an inexplicable $100 million. So instead of 2.1 billion that for next year, he has $2 billion in. Now, I actually think that's a budget balancer. If things get worse from an economic standpoint, I think we could see, we could end up losing that. Now, for purposes of this district, you guys have a real commitment to school facilities of just the priorities that were just elaborated on, where you're looking at the things you need to do and how you pay for those as you go. And it's always a deliberation about what resources you have locally and whether or not you ever want to go to a bond, go get a bond locally. But what I always say, it's a little bit conservative disposition on this, is that, and I always, I've said this since I was lobbying for school boards way back when, is that we're the only type of infrastructure, parks, roads, sewers, everything. We're the only type of infrastructure where if you match, if you pass a local bond and you match it to state bonds that have been passed, you're using someone else's money to match against your local money to double the dollars for your own facilities locally. And I guarantee you, there are people in other districts who will gladly spend your money if you don't go to the ballot and do a bond. But timing is everything. Having a real sensitivity to the mood of your electorate and whether they're willing to go there. And when they're not, they're just not. There is a potential for reform in the school facility program that we have to watch out for in this district. Because if you ever do want to go for a bond, some of the reforms that are being talked about is to convert the state school construction program into a mirror of LCFF, where disproportionately huge chunks of the money go out only predicated on concentrations of poverty. And it will bypass districts who deserve to have resources matched because voters vote sometimes locally on bonds and have that expectation. And you want to make sure you're able to get your share if and when you ever want to go there. Not that you're ready to go pass a bond, but we want to make sure we protect your interests in the event you ever go there. So that's a little bit of an overview. There's probably some stuff I haven't covered. There was one thing on Prop 28 that was important, which is in the drafting of Prop 28, they were absolutely headed in a direction to duplicate again the LCFF-type approach. And the approach they used ended up netting, basically, we said, look, don't do that because you're going to leave, just like the TK program, a bunch of school districts out of the mix who have a value for arts and music, and we want to make sure every kid benefits by it. And of course, the ballot measure ended up being written in a way that you guys will actually benefit. So we're really happy about that. And then one of the things we're always afraid of is potential opposition, which, you know, we can generate a good deal of opposition if they're not writing these things in a way that has some sensitivity to the needs of all kids. So I'm going to stop there and see if you have any questions.
Thank you. Yes, Trustee Crane.
Thank you for the great insight. I do have a question. You mentioned the equity multiplier. You had mentioned $300 million. And you had said that the funding typically goes district-wide and you would prefer, for our purpose, especially our demographic, to go site-focused. Is this something that you're lobbying for or it's already in?
Well, it is, it is something we've been lobbying. And I was like, you know, running around with that PPIC report saying, look at this, read this. And there weren't a whole lot of takers. So when we saw this pot of money today, I immediately thought it's the same knee-jerk reaction, which is going to go out to LEAs. And then as I read the descriptor, and again, we call it sort of the PR document that's put out today. We're going to get what's called Budget Trailer Bill Language, which is all the detail. So we'll see the detail. But it's pretty clear to me by the little descriptor that was in there that, and it says it's going to be site-focused and that we're going to reimagine this. And then it actually says, predicated on research and studies and conclusions that people have made in reevaluating LCFF 10 years later. So I'm pretty optimistic.
Oh, good. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, and Kevin, you know this, but, and you've lived this. They expect, because we're a community-funded district, that we don't have students with needs. And we have the highest concentration or percentage of low SES students in the state for a community-funded district. So we have great need, but when they look at the district level, they can deny those needs that we have. But if we look at our sites and we're all on our sites, we know what we have and, and the funds that are being denied a district like ours.
I mean, you just think about that inequity of a poor kid, and just by virtue of where they live, they'll get cheated out of the same resources they ought to have that bootstraps their educational success. It's just not right. So I think we're going to get some focus on that this year. I am, you know, there is a little bit of a debate here, and I heard it from one legislator who I talked to today, who said, I'll just tell you this. You know, I'm always a vote, he was telling me, I'm always a vote in favor of that money that's focused on equity. But if for any reason they're shorting the COLA and they're funding this new thing, I'm for making sure we pay the fundamentals first, which is COLA. And frankly, we ought to be for that, too, is the money that funds that base and across those categorical programs where this district gets a full COLA should be done first before you're inventing new stuff. And God bless the new stuff, but let's pay attention to fundamentals first. So that is going to be an important consideration.
Trustee Murphy.
Oh, yeah. I was just wondering, when do they think we're going to see Prop 28 money?
So they did, they are redoing the whole, you know, the benchmark of Prop 98. The anticipation is it does happen in time for the passage of the new Budget Act, which corresponds to July 1. So we're talking about July 1. And the governor's totally committed to it. There's a whole passage in there in the budget about making that adjustment and getting the money out the door for that. Now, you guys know there's a lot of little strings attached. One of it is 80% of the money has to be spent on actual staff. 20%, you know, on other kinds of things that are, that you probably hear a lot about, whether it's band uniforms or instruments or, you know, art supplies and all that stuff. The other most important consideration you have to be careful about is that this current year is the benchmark year for that definition about it has to be all new stuff. So if you thought, oh, I got the one-time block grant for art and music, let's go out and spend a bunch of that money on stuff. Next year, you're going to get punished for getting the stuff you did with the one-time block grant money if you spent on art and music because you can't use the permanent ongoing money to actually pay. It has to be on top of that. So it's kind of a gotcha. You have to be really careful about that. And there's one superintendent that told me, I took the one-time money and hired an art and music person at every site. And Mike Fine, who's with FICMAT, looked at her and said, change the name of the position quickly to supplemental education advisor or something. But the point is, is that, you know, they want you to do, well, if you go in and do something really positive with one-time money because you really wanted to get a head start and that the permanent money will kick in, that's a logical way to do things. But of course, the way to write the budget, you have to do this dance around all the rules. So we got to keep, make sure we're paying attention to that.
Trustee Murphy.
So that explains why our foundation should probably not buy all new ukuleles for the entire school this year.
Now, I will tell you.
I mean, I'm just like, my head's spinning now. I don't know what to spend this money on.
What we do have to think about, though, and I can look into this a little bit more and give the superintendent and your CBO a little advice on it. I need to look into it because I'm not so sure it applies to a foundation's resources. Now, if it's a foundation's resources that come into the district and then you spend the money, yeah, you're probably, that's probably a gotcha. If it's foundation goes, we want you, foundation, to spend money on all this stuff, and they go do that, it could be potential. But we can work through that. I can answer your questions and help you guys navigate that a little bit.
Yeah, that would be great.
But your instincts are right, generally, which is not a good year to go out and go follow this stuff. And for arts and music advocates, you want to focus on the real prize, which is permanent ongoing money. And by the way, that pot of money in the ballot measure is guaranteed the COLA every year in perpetuity. So we're not going to have to fight for that. So it'll get increased by inflation every single year. It's good. It's really good stuff. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Trustee Wagen.
I know in the last two years that it's a mandate for free lunch in the state, right? But they're not funding it, correct? And we have to fund that.
No, they, they are, but we got to keep them honest. I mean, there are aspects of it that essentially what they're doing is they're saying, look, we're funding universal meals, but they're funding it at the rate that the feds say is what you need to buy a meal. And I used to, I testified once, fortunately, we represent all the school nutrition programs in the state to the state legislature. And in one hearing, I threw a quarter, a quarter on the table and said, this is what you're spending, your share of what you're spending to buy a kid their lunch. And I said, try going out to lunch someday and say, hey, I got this. Put a quarter on the table for your friend. And they say, no, it's not enough to buy lunch. Is that we have to advocate that the dollar amount that's that reimbursement rate is actually closer to what the real costs are. And it's way more than a quarter now. But it's sort of exposing how long I've been doing this. But we do have to sort of stay keeping them honest with regard to what that reimbursement rate looks like. But I do think it's admirable that the administration has stayed committed to this. One of the things that I think the governor really was hoping, you know, Joe Biden had had this in his budget. And I think the way I've seen many other governors do it is they make the promise, hoping the feds will do it. And then it gets them off the hook. Newsom said, if they do it and they give us the money to do it, I'm still committed to keeping all that money in the budget, not cutting it at all. So districts can then use that for kitchens and other kinds of things because there's a lot of need in the school nutrition area. And I thought that was pretty admirable. But, you know, we're always trying to, again, hold them accountable for some of those promises that they made. So we have some work to do on that, but, but we do need to keep them accountable to fully funding it, so.
And then do you believe that we, that even with a projected, say, deficit, even maybe it's not a projected deficit, but that the COLA will still be 8.7?
I don't know. And here's the way it's done. Is there eight data points that measure what the COLA will end up being? And they're taking a look at inflation during those data points. And the, the number of data points we have right now, only two of the eight. What's happening to inflation? It's actually getting better. So that means we think that could be some of the reasons for the governor's modified forecast. And if it comes at 8.1 and he fully funds it, I'm all for that. That's great. But if it is 8.7, or a lot of my colleagues up in Sacramento thought it was going to be 10, thought it was going to be actually worse. Now, I have a personal opinion about COLA, which is that it's in the law. Our COLA is in the law for K-12. In fact, Jack O'Connell wrote that law. And what it says in there, and you should hear the story about how he wrote it, which is that he had all these indexes on a table. He said, which one generates the most amount of money over 10-year period? That's the one we're going with. And we grabbed that and we did it. Well, it's the market basket of goods and services purchased by state and local government. It has nothing to do with our cost in education. Meanwhile, over the last decade, we've had runaway increased costs in special ed. We've had the STIRS-PURS issue. We have all kinds of things. I think we ought to be arguing for the COLA to get scrapped and do a new one that actually reflects the increased costs we have as public schools. And it ought to have all of these characteristics in it, and it would probably be over 12%. But if, I think it's timed, that thing is like 30 years old, that COLA formula, is that we look at it, of course, lawmakers are not going to want to look at it in a year when they don't have money. The time to do it is in a year when they have money. And so we may have to revisit that on another year. Very good.
Any other questions?
Guys are too afraid to ask me another question because I'll.
Thank you so much. This is really excellent information.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be representing you, and I'm really looking forward to getting involved much more and aggressively advocate on behalf of the district. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving to consent calendar.
I have a motion.
I'm, I move that we adopt a consent calendar as listed.
Second. Okay. Moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Ursulou. Roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Bartow.
Yes.
Okay. Discussion action calendar. Adopt resolution number 190123, Beneficiary Agreement Between the County of Orange and Newport Mesa Unified School District for American Rescue Plan Act Funding. Mr. Trader.
Supervisor Bartlett has feel strongly about school safety, and so she's allocated $100,000 for the district to be used for standard response protocol training, lobby, security upgrade programming, and a test of the strategic crisis alerting system.
Great. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Second, or, I, let's do a first first. So moved.
Trustee Wagen.
Second.
Trustee Ursulou. Roll call vote. Student Board Member TJ Rocos.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Bartow.
Yes.
Okay, great. Now we'll move to informal reports.
I want to start with a huge thank you to, I'm probably forgetting some of our staff, but in particular, maintenance and operations and IT. In this unprecedented storm, we've had folks all day and night throughout the break monitoring our classrooms. Lance and the team ordered hundreds and hundreds of sandbags before that supply was exhausted so we could get ready for this. Late at night, early in the morning, checking, and we've been able to keep our classrooms open. And that wouldn't be without the support of our team in the field, and so I can't thank them enough. All school districts also suffer, in any institution with a building, vandalism from time to time. And we had some recently, the Sunday before we brought our kiddos back. And it was in the evening, and our team got out there and got those classrooms ready and got them the technology they needed. And every student that was supposed to be on that facility the next day showed up for instruction. That's pretty cool. So I, thank you to our team out there for the work that they do to keep our students safe and, these days, dry. You know, we've, we've had the, the break, and so we haven't had as many things to go to. I did want to report that I've met with both city managers last week. We've got amazing city leaders in, in both of our communities. And each of them asked the same question. They have some resources and they want to work with us in law enforcement to see what we can do to better address the fentanyl abuse situation that we have. Each of them, and they hadn't orchestrated this, within a day of one another, said the same thing. So we're, we're meeting with our staffs to say, what would that look like? What more can we do together in, in a unified approach? I really appreciate them and their concern for our students. And then we've been working on, as a commitment from this board, convening a task force on school safety. There's no more important topic. We talk about this all the time. We have started the process of walking every single campus. As Jeff, I think, pointed out, we have more square footage than Disneyland in the district. And we're walking all of it, every nook and cranny, with a kayak here in Orange County. And they're experts to say, what, what are the priorities regarding school safety? And they've worked with, and we could have gone with a lot of vendors, but they're experts that work with other school districts, and they know what other school districts are doing, what's working, what isn't working. And so we had those walks started last week in the rain. And we're, we're really grateful to work with them. And we'll be bringing some recommendations forward to you this spring so we can start to have you prioritize what we're going to work on to, to better protect our facilities and our students. But again, big thank you to staff for all of your efforts to, to keep our classrooms open.
Do we have any board member reports? And now we've just come back from break. So I won't do everyone, because I don't know if everyone has any.
I can start.
Okay.
So we have an upcoming Newport Mesa Schools Foundation meeting on this coming Thursday. Trustee Pearson and I are the liaisons for the foundation. And they want us, they want everyone to know that the application for the Grants for Teachers program is now available online. And as you know, in the past, they have donated between $80,000 to $100,000 to our teachers who applied for the grants. So available online, breaking news. Also, please save the date for May 10th for the annual teacher banquet. So if you want to put that on your calendar, that's always a very fun, wonderful event. And I believe they're going to have a change in venue. And I will wait for next month to make sure to announce where. But Jeff, get ready. May 10th. Thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Bart?
Yes, so over the break, trustee Crane and I worked a bit on kicking off our first quarter Community Alliance for Bike Safety meetings. So that's going to start on, that's scheduled for the 19th, January 19th at 4:00 PM. We have made some progress, and it's really wonderful to see how our group has brought so many groups together. Some things that have happened since our last meeting were bike helmets and bike lights were distributed to a bunch of our community partners through these meetings, which, when we put them together, we weren't really sure what the mission was. We saw a need, and we kind of just tried to go with, with what came out of it. And what we've seen is it's created kind of a hub for connection for a lot of groups that are already working on bike safety and e-bike safety specifically. So we've got groups who are lobbyists and legis, involved with legislation. We've got groups that are involved with helmets and bike lights and practical things like that. And then our police departments in both cities. And it's been really wonderful to see how excited everyone is and connected. Something that's coming down the pike with our high schools is going to be a contest to develop a bike safety video kind of presentation. So that's, look for that before the end of the school year. And then last but not least, thanks so much to all of our staff and teachers. I can't think of a smoother January start considering all the challenges everyone faced with all the rain, especially at Newport Harbor, where they, in the past, have had kayaks and canoes. When we've had weather like this with the puddles, it's been just really impressive about smoothly everything has gone from dropping off my kids at various schools to the pickups, to seeing everyone just engaged. And that momentum that we had before the break is still very much there amongst the students. So it's wonderful, and I was also just really happy with how they, happy they were to be out of my house.
Anyone else? Okay. All right, thank you. We will adjourn the meeting at 8:15.
Thank you.